I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. Is there a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I move that the Williamsburg, oh, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sarza?
Mrs. Young.
Here.
Aye. Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving to item 3.1, Mrs. Sarza, will you take attendance, please?
Dr. Beers.
Yeah.
Ms. Cook.
Here.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
Now I am saying here.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Item 3.2, approval of the agenda. I'd like a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Mrs. Sarza?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Moving to item 4.1, announcement superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. I'd like to begin my report with a word about kindness. Well, WJCC schools is pleased to support a community initiative, WMBG Kind, in highlighting acts of kindness and goodwill in our schools, neighborhoods, and workplaces. Sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, the Greater Williamsburg Kind Campaign kicked off last Friday. It was inspired by a California mayor who challenged elementary school students to perform a million acts of kindness while he was still in office. We know that acts of kindness, random and organized, are happening every day in our schools and offices. We will highlight our kind students and staff on school and division Twitter and Instagram accounts using the hashtags, #WJCC and WMBGKind. I will also share some examples of these kind acts in future reports to the school board. Williamsburg Kind is hoping to involve the entire historic triangle in this effort, so if you see acts of kindness in our community or your workplace, please share your stories and photographs using the hashtag WMBGKind. Also tonight, I have a reminder for families with children in grades five through 11. Beginning tonight, the division is hosting two course planning and curriculum fair nights. These events are an opportunity for students and families to get information about the next school year, speak to representatives from each subject area, and get a jump start on the student course selection and registration process. The middle school course planning night is taking place right now at the Williamsburg Community Chapel. The high school session is this Thursday, February 7th, at the same location. Rising 9th and 10th graders should plan to attend at 5:30 PM, followed by a session at 6:30 PM for the rising 11th and 12th graders. The course planning night and curriculum fair is organized by our school counselors. Speaking of our incredible school counselors, I would like to take just a moment to thank them for all they do to support students, both academically and personally. February 4th through 8th is National School Counseling Week. This year's theme is school counselors providing lessons for life. Our dedicated school counselors work with students every day on academic and career development and to provide mental and behavioral health supports. As you know, comprehensive school counseling programs are vital to both student wellness and achievement. We are very fortunate in WJCC schools to have knowledgeable, caring, and compassionate counselors in each of our schools. Finally, I would like to highlight that February is school school board appreciation month, and if you look behind you this evening, there are three wonderful posters created by our students to thank members of the school board. Month-long observance is an opportunity for our parents, teachers, and community to say thank you to our board members for the countless hours you spend focused on providing the young people of Williamsburg and James City County with a high-quality education. You have an enormous job with oversight of policies and strategic plan that serve as a framework for teaching and learning in our schools, along with the budget to fund that work. On behalf of WJCC school staff, I would like to express our respect and admiration for you as leaders in our school community. Thank you very much for all you do. Madam Chair, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there additional announcements from board members? I do have one additional follow-up announcement. February 18th through 22nd is school board clerk appreciation week, and so, Ms. Sarza, on behalf of the school board, we would love to present you with these lovely flowers, and thank you for all that you do. Your organizational skills keep us on track and on topic. You do an excellent job of keeping accurate records. You are often the very first point of contact for community individuals and represent us very well. Your professionalism is evident in with everyone that you meet with and speak to, and we thank you for all of your support. We couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
She hounds us appropriately.
Thank you again, Janet. Okay, item 5.1, this is an opportunity for citizens' comments, and I believe we have one speaker. Or no? Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, citizens are asked to not engage in applauding verbal outbursts or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments during the meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair, and my instructions are concluded.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Rose Roberts?
Hi, everyone. I would really just like to double up what Dr. Heron was saying in her announcements and superintendent report, and give a huge shout-out to all of our school counselors. Without them, everyone would be crazy at all of our schools. You know, they help keep not only the teachers sane, but also the students, the parents, the administrators, bringing us all to the table, keeping everyone on track, trying to achieve all the same goals. And I know especially right now at War Hill, we are down a school counselor. Mr. Blunt had to leave us for his military responsibilities. So, an extra special shout-out to Mrs. Miller, Mrs. Musk Gregory, and Mrs. Knight, who are a man down in their department at one of the toughest times in the school year to be doing that with our curriculum fair Thursday, the change of the semester's scheduling coming up, all of that kind of stuff. So, I know that they're working kind of double-time to get everything done smoothly and efficiently, and we really appreciate it. And then also, thank you to all of you for everything that you do, for listening, for conversing, and doing what you think is best for our division. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
Okay, moving on to proposed agenda items, 6.1, the 2019-2020 school calendar.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Each year, we bring a proposed calendar for your consideration, and this year, Ms. Cox, Senior Director of Communication, has facilitated the calendar committee. Ms. Cox.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, tonight I will be providing you with an overview of the 1920 academic calendar, as well as a long-range preview of the 2020-2021 calendar. That's hard to say, let alone imagine that it's this close. So, each year, the school calendar committee develops a draft calendar for your consideration using the parameters that you see there on the screen. Through the Virginia Department of Education and state code, school divisions are required to start after Labor Day and have a calendar that provides 180 instructional days and 990 instructional hours. In WJCC, we align the calendar with our regional school divisions. We have a need to identify professional development time within the calendar, and traditionally, we do not have instructional days on Election Day. Students are not in school. This year, there are several bills in the General Assembly that could potentially impact our school calendar in the future. One is a House bill that says that all school divisions across the state must commit to having Election Day be separate, non-instructional, and one version of the bill actually says that you can't even have, like, conferences with parents on those days to limit the number of people coming in and out of a school on Election Day. Two bills were introduced in both the House and Senate that would provide a waiver for makeup time in the event that there was a need for closure based on mandatory evacuations. As you might imagine, the sponsors of those bills are from the Hampton Roads area, where they had some significant closures this fall for hurricanes. And then, as usual, there is a bill in both the House and Senate for proposing a pre-Labor Day start. The one that seems to be getting the most traction is Senate Bill 1005, which has been approved by the Senate and will now be considered by the House, which says that local school boards will have the authority to set the first day of school no more than 14 days in advance of Labor Day, and that if the school board were to open prior to Labor Day, they must be closed the Friday before Labor Day through Labor Day. So, as I said, that's gone through and was approved by the Senate and is now, has been referred to the House Committee on Education. So, again, using all of those parameters, how is the calendar developed? First, the regional calendar committee meets. That's a representative from each of our neighboring school divisions, and I represent WJCC schools on the regional committee. We look at what are the needs of shared programs, and then also, we want to, whenever possible, provide consistency in scheduling for employees who may work in one division but have students attending school in another. From there, we identify our needs and our wants, and then we all go back to our own home-school divisions and speak with our calendar committees. In January, our calendar committee met. It had representatives from eight schools, the PTA, central office, professional associations, and actually, our speaker this evening was also a member of our calendar committee, so many thanks to her. We consider the needs for each level and also bring the perspective of our individual offices and work to determine what our needs and wants are for the calendar, and then we prioritize those. From there, we bring a calendar for consideration to the superintendent and then to you all as a board. At your seats, you have a draft of the 1920 calendar. It's red. You will see that it has 180 instructional days. It has designated time built in for professional development, and the days that are designated on the calendar in front of you are in addition to the professional development that staff takes part in prior to student arrival in September. It also has some early release days related to parent and teacher conferences, workdays, and exams. On the screen there, you see some important calendar dates. First day of school, September 3rd, Thanksgiving break, which is, again, this year, proposed to be three days, winter break, which is December 23rd through January 3rd, but I should note there that Christmas Day and New Year's Day fall on Wednesdays, so it's still a two-week window, and you have the weekend before as well. So, it might look, date-wise, as if it's not as long, but it actually is. There's a week at spring break, and graduation is slated for June 13th. Holidays there on the screen, Election Day, again, students will not be in school, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, and Memorial Day. What you won't see on that calendar are designated makeup days, because as we learned from Mother Nature this fall, she doesn't care what days we have marked on the calendar's makeup days. So, instead, we're going to codify on the bottom of the calendar the practice that we're currently using, which is that the makeup time for lost instructional time will be determined by the superintendent using a combination of banked time, staff days, holidays, and such. So, what are the next steps with regard to the 1920 calendar? Tomorrow, we will post the calendar on the website and send an email to staff and to parents asking for their feedback on the calendar. We'll post reminders throughout the week and provide links to that calendar. Once the window closes, a summary of the feedback gathered will be provided to the superintendent and members of the calendar committee, and we will discuss any potential calendar adjustments at that time, and then we'll bring that back to you for discussion and potential approval. Sir?
Dates on those various things?
You know, like, is there a deadline for social media posts?
Yes, sir. So, in the, it might be hard to see in eras there.
It was so light.
Yep. So, we'll start that tomorrow, and then we'll have through the 14th for people to give feedback, just to give us time to gather all of that and have a thoughtful review of it. So, the 2021 calendar, we took a little bit different approach to the development of the long-range calendar, if you will. We started with each person receiving a blank calendar, and committee members were asked to come up with what would their ideal calendar be. So, it wasn't just a rubber stamp. It was given some thoughtful consideration to what their needs for their job were. And then, we took those drafts and worked in small groups to see if we could reach consensus for the small groups, and then reported back to the large group. It was amazing to see the commonalities from group to group to group, and then also, really, the willingness of the committee members to give consideration to the needs of others and come to some, make some concessions where necessary, and then come to what we believe is a really good calendar. So, again, it has 180 instructional days, excuse me, with identified time for professional development, and aligns with the long-range identified needs of the regional calendar. You'll see the important dates there on the screen as well. First day of school, September 8th, Thanksgiving, winter, and spring breaks are all the same length as the current calendar, and graduation is the 19th. You have a copy of the draft 2021 calendar at your seat. It's the teal color. One important thing to note is that the first day of school is September 8th, because Labor Day is late that year, which also pushes graduation back a week. So, basically, the entire calendar is adjusted a week back. So, we'll also post the 2021 calendar online for feedback this week and gather that information. Again, that's not a calendar that we're asking you to approve at this time. It simply gives us some direction for meeting with the regional calendar committee in the That is our presentation, or my presentation, for the evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Hummel?
For people who are listening, can you explain what banked time means?
Sure. So, again, the code says that you must have 180 instructional days or 990 instructional hours. And so, based on class length and length of day, we can exceed that in any individual class or for the day. And so, based on the level, based on the courses, that could range, but it's always over 990 hours. That gives us a little leeway, but what I also hope that people understand is that missing time is not the same as missing instruction. And so, when we're talking about makeup plans, it's not about making up minutes, it's about making up valuable instruction that's missed.
Thank you.
One other question. So, when the General Assembly, if that goes through the other House, then, and becomes, like, they allow it, at what point would you? What's the feeling of the?
There's been a little bit of discussion among superintendents that we would actually wait until next year to make the change, but I'm sure if it really becomes a reality, and it looks much more likely than it's ever done in our history, because this is a bill that comes forward every single year, but there's a lot of traction, agreement, and the last version of it was actually brought by the tourist industry, and that's the one that's been passed by the Senate at this moment in time. We would need to probably talk with superintendents pretty quickly and see if it's possible for next year. It may be too much too soon.
Thank you.
So, I have three questions. The first follows up on Ms. Hummel's question. So, if SB 1005 does pass, you're anticipating that the 20 calendar, the teal calendar, would be the first one impacted?
Potentially. Certainly, we would speak very quickly with our surrounding partners, other school systems. The sooner the better, because it gives us a lot more flexibility in our calendar, but we don't want to rush it and not do it well. So, we'll collaborate if it becomes a reality and then make a decision, and if we need to bring this back to the board, we would certainly do that.
And then, I have two more questions. One has to do with spring break. It seems a little later than normal. Is, was there a reason for that, or just, I'm just curious?
I believe it is always the first full week of April.
Is that what it is? Full, okay. And then, in terms of the process that you outlined, how time-sensitive is this? SB 1005 aside, let's pretend that's not out there, but if, let's say the public input is such that it warrants further conversation, are we compelled to adopt it for time-sensitive reasons at the next meeting, or can it go further if there's some, for some reason, additional discussion required?
So, it's a delicate balance, because you want to have as much time as possible for the community to provide input, but I will say that we're already hearing from groups that organize before and after-school programs and parents who are trying to plan vacations out, who are already asking why it's so late to be getting the calendar. So, that's, is there a legal reason? No, but I think it's just the consideration for the families in their planning.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Additional questions? Mr. Kelly?
And for that reason, if SB 1005 goes through, I would wait till next year, because you put a calendar out, people make plans, and it's unfair to change that two months later and say, "Sorry." That's my thought.
Three. Additional questions? Feedback? Thank you. Thanks. Okay, the next item is 6.2, request for use of facilities Harvest Church at Berkeley Middle School. Mr. Snipes?
Good evening, Madam Chair, school board members. Dr. Heron, tonight's placeholder agenda item is for, is a request for Harvest Church to rent space at Berkeley Middle School at no cost to the school division. The church has provided all the necessary and appropriate documentation, which is available in the office of the facility manager and operations. Mr. Chigareidis, the principal, has approved the request for, at the building level, and this is a first-time request from Harvest Church. The superintendent recommends that the school board review this request and be ready to vote at the February 19th meeting.
There comments, questions for Mr. Snipes?
I have one. You say it's at no cost, but do they pay anything?
It's at no cost to the division, but yes, they pay.
Yeah, I know it's at no cost to our division. I just am wondering, so...
They rent the facility.
They rent the facility?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Because it's a public building, we really can't turn it down.
That is correct.
Yeah. Chair, when you're talking about rental, what are the rental fees for something like this?
It depends on which part of the building that they rent. However, if they rent the auditorium, it's $105 per hour. Of course, there's a custodial rate, because a custodian has to be there to clean up and open the building. That's at $20 per hour. If they rent the cafeteria, which is, sometimes they need overflow, because for whatever reason they may be feeding, it's $50 per hour. But there are, the list of fees are online as well with this policy.
Do you have additional?
I do. So, if the custodian has to be there and he gets, and that money is allotted for them, is that extra pay given to the custodian?
Yes, the custodian is paid out of facilities, out of the operations fund, the school division's operating fund. It's not paid directly to the custodian, paid by the school division. We receive funds from the renter to pay that custodian.
Right. Is that considered overtime pay?
Overtime, based on if they are 40 hours in a week. We do have some part-time individuals that work to open up those facilities as well, so that would be straight time for those custodians. It's only overtime if it's 40 hours. It's always additional time, but it's only 40, it's only overtime if it goes over 40 hours in the week.
Okay, thank you.
So, how would, when you're assessing a custodial fee, how do you know at the time you're assessing the fee, whether it's a overtime amount of money versus?
Based on if the person has worked over 40 hours in that week, but usually...
Like, how would you know how to assess, or you just have a custodial fee that is more than enough to handle regardless of whether it is...
Correct. We know what our average custodial cost is, and of course, we try to allow our...
Great, thanks.
Additional questions for Mr. Snipes? Okay, the next item is 6.3, award a contract for invitation for bid 19-13723, chiller replacement at Matthew Bailey Elementary School.
Again, this is a placeholder agenda item for awarding that chiller replacement at Matthew Bailey. It's for your information and discussion tonight. This project was approved in the FY 19 capital improvement plan. It involves replacement of the chiller and of the domestic water heater. It's also recommended by the Facility Condition Index, which was conducted back in 2016. The project is scheduled for completion before the start of next school year, which means that work will begin this summer. We'll be replacing the chiller, the chiller water pumps and hot water pumps, and we will be replacing the variable frequency drives for the HVAC. Invitation for bid was sent out on January 2nd and due back on the 31st, but at the time this agenda item was written, we had received that information as of yet. The total project budget was provided to us by MJT for a total of $321,000, and we have already paid out of that about $16,000 for design to Mosley Architects. And the superintendent recommends that, again, you review the information and be prepared to vote at the February 19th meeting.
Questions for Mr. Snipes? Snipes? Okay, moving on to information and discussion items. Item 7.1, the FY 2020 operating budget discussion. Before we begin that discussion, Mr. Kelly and Ms. Cook?
As a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I have an interest in the fiscal year 2019-2020 school budget, because my wife is an employee of the WJCC schools. However, I believe I am able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Ms. Cook?
Madam Chair, as a member of the school board of Williamsburg James City County, I acknowledge I have an interest in the fiscal year 2019-2020 school budget, because I'm an employee of the Williamsburg Health Foundation. However, I believe I'm able to participate in the consideration of and vote on the budget fairly and in the public interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The last two sessions, we've had two full work sessions on the budget, and this is the board's opportunity to come back and a further discussion about the operating budget. Just to lead into that conversation, wanted to remind you of where we left off, and Ms. Ewing's going to present just a couple of slides to do with revenue and potential expenditures. And then, we did have some questions from board members regarding cost share of healthcare, so we've got a couple of slides to explain a piece of that, and then we'll step back and allow your discussion. So, Ms. Ewing?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, as Dr. Heron stated, we're just going to review the revenue and expenditure information that we discussed at our prior work sessions this evening, and then Mr. Baker will share some additional information related to healthcare. I just want to remind everyone that this is preliminary look at revenue based on the governor's proposed budget and proposed local government transfers. The House and Senate budget versions have been released, but we will not know how they may impact us until the Virginia Department of Education releases their superintendent's memo with the calculus. As a review from our previous meetings, our revenue adjustments total approximately $4.1 million. Our total mandatory and essential increases amount to $5.4 million. Our expenditure increases amount to $660,000. Our expenditure increases amount to $665,974, and this amount does reflect the addition of two additional middle school APs, as was discussed at the last work session. With an estimated attrition savings amount of $1 million, this leaves a shortfall of approximately $900,000. This would then become an additional request to the localities, or we would need to look at a reduction in expenditures. Mr. Baker will now share with you the additional information regarding healthcare.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, what I'm going to present today is some more additional information that was similar format than I presented the last board, the last two board meetings. On the January 22nd board meeting, I showed you, presented a lot of information regarding a cost share that was 82.1% that the employer was paying, and then 17.9% that the employees were paying. We did have several board members ask us questions about what would that look like if we moved it 1%. So tonight, I have some general information about if, what would the cost share look like if we paid 81.1% of the cost and the employees paid 18.9% of the cost. On January 22nd, with those changes, it would potentially increase, the largest increase to any particular employee would be $18 a month. With this new scenario, the largest increase would be $39 a month, and I'll show you here in a minute what we got there. This was the same options I was showing last time, some more popular options of our $500 deductible plan for employee-only, employee plus spouse and family. So with this new option of the cost share being 81.1% employer and 18.9% of the employee, the employee for the employee, the $500 deductible plan, employee only, the employee would pay $40 a month, or about 6% of the cost, and that would be a $13 a month increase from the current rate. For employee plus spouse, that'd be $230 a month, and that would be about 18% of the cost, and that'd be an $18 a month increase from the current rate. And for the family plan, for the $500 deductible plan, it'd be $303 a month, or about 16% of the cost, and that'd be a $37 a month increase for the employee. The other option is our $250 deductible option. One board member questioned, said, "Oh, Tim, what if we eliminated this more expensive plan? Would that help us?" No, because if you look, I'll flip back to the slides, we're paying for employee-only $650 on the $250 deductible plan. For the $500 deductible plan, we're also paying $650. We're paying the same rate. The employee pays the difference for this higher, more expensive plan. So for the $250 deductible plan, at this new option of this 81.1% employer portion and the 18.9% employee portion, the employee would pay $101 a month for this plan for employee-only, about 13% of the cost, and that'd be a $14 a month increase from the current rate. Employee plus spouse would be $343 a month, or about 25% of the cost, and that's a $20 a month increase. For the family plan, it'd be $467 a month, or about 23% of the cost, and that'd be a $39 a month increase, and that's the largest increase because it's the most expensive plan covering your family.
Are these 10-month numbers or 12-month numbers?
12-month.
Okay.
And then, as I talked about last time, we're not proposing any changes with the higher deductible plan, keeping the same rates. The only change would be to adjust the health savings accounts.
On this slide, I know that you add a contribution to the HSA as part of this. Do these numbers reflect that? I'm...
No, that's just what, to get the actual coverage is what we're paying. So what we're proposing is getting back to the slide before to get to that 650 number. So we would, we would up ours, the HSA, to get us closer to the 650.
Is there any way you can like make a little notation underneath one of the, each of those pies so that it's, brings it to 650?
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah.
So that way it's clearer that it's the same?
Try to get us there. And so, it's over the actual rates, we weren't proposing any changes.
Right, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
If you flip back, when you were talking about from the current rate, oh, the current rate, sorry. In our budget discussions a couple weeks ago, we were talking about the healthcare costs are going up, correct?
1.5%.
1.5%. So what I was expecting to see tonight was, this was the amount in the original, you know, with the 1.5% increase, and then I was expecting to see what's the difference if we do a 1% increase for the cost share? And I'm, because it's not, like, if you go back and you're saying, what was your original...
The middle column there is from the January 22nd, that included the new number with the 1.5%.
Okay, so that, on the second slide, if you go to the next slide, and then you said, so with option two, it's going to be, how much, you said it was going to be how much more from the current plan?
Sure. This, on this slide here, so it's $40 a month is the proposal, and that's $13 a month more than what they're currently paying.
What, how much more is it than what is in our proposed budget with the 1.5% increase? See what I'm saying?
Sure.
I'm trying to get...
Sure, what I showed you last, sure. No, no, I think I know what you're saying.
I'm trying to get the delta, and I'm not seeing that here.
Sure, I think what I showed you last board meeting was $28 a month.
That's what I wanted. I wanted to see the difference between what they, what was in the 1.5%, the original proposed budget versus how much the delta would be in this option. Okay.
I can, for what I presented on January 22nd was, on this slide, it was $40, right, I'm saying, tonight you're saying $40. What we had there was $28 a month the employee was paying, $223 the employee was paying, and $282 the employee was paying.
That's the delta.
That's the delta. It would be nice, maybe, if you could, like Ms. Cook said, delineate that or actually have that.
Sure, sure, we can, we can...
Speaker, I have a question. I, there was some discussion about increasing, I'm sorry, about decreasing the WJCC contribution, which would lead to increasing percentage raise for teachers. Are we, are we still thinking about that or talking about that?
I guess the question we had received from the board was, I guess, kind of back to this slide, was if, if we took our cost share another one full percentage point, and that's what I tried to show here, is we went from 82.1% down to 81.1%, and so our difference from what I presented on January 22nd went from $18,472,603 to $18,236,835 for a difference of $235,768 is the money that you're gaining, I guess, at it that way.
It's a quarter percent raise.
All right. Correct, I mean, that's one way to look at it.
Right, okay. And it's 11, I'm looking at that at the most, $11.
Not significant.
What I was showing, well, what they're trying to show, or I'm, I apologize, what I'm trying to show there is the difference from what they're currently paying this year against different proposals that have come up in the last month.
And so if we look at 1819, we're at $18,300,000. And then, one idea was to increase our bid a little bit, but then the 18.1, I mean, 81.1%, our cost share actually goes down, is what...
That was the question from the board, is what if we changed our cost share by one percentage point to go down by one?
Oh, okay, so I thought it was, instead of going, instead of, I thought the original idea was to split the cost share increase.
Yeah, we're, the first piece, as we talked about last time, we'd split it, the increase, and that did affect the cost share by about 0.4 of a percent. Then we were looking, we got asked the question, what if we take that and move it another 1%? And that's what the column on the right shows. In fact, we're asked for several different options, but we already were beneath the others. So this was just to give a sense of if we move it another 1%, this is potentially what it could cost the employer and the employee. And perhaps the next slide shows the impact a little bit more. If you remember last time, Dr., Mr. Baker presented what it would look like compared to a 4% raise and put it in the context of that. So if you look at this, it just gives you a sense that if we, this is option two, Mr. Baker?
Correct. This is if we moved it to 81.1% employer, 18.9% employee. There's four pieces of information on this slide. There's, there's how much would this go up from the current rate for the $500 deductible plan and the $250 deductible plan? So the, the potential, shifting the cost share to this new cost share for employee-only for the $500 deductible plan would be an annual increase of $156 to the employee-only, the $216 increase for the employee plus spouse, and $440 increase for the family plan on the $500 deductible plan. And then the bars above it are showing you what a 4% raise would mean for a beginning teacher and for a 4% raise for a teacher currently making $50,000. The bars on the right are the $250 deductible plan, so with this new cost share that we're showing is $168 for employee-only, $400 for employee plus spouse, and $468 increase annually for the, the family plan.
Mr. Baker, if I could just maybe ask a clarifying question? So, so with regard to the 1.5% increase in the cost of insurance, what was proposed at the last meeting was that the division and the employee would split that 50/50, which is new, because typically we've not done that. But that doesn't realize any cost savings, if you will. So what you're suggesting tonight, what you're presenting tonight, by moving the division's total cost of the insurance down from 82-ish to 81-ish, realizes a cost savings of a little over, around $200,000.
Correct. And that was, I think, the question that was proposed to us, if we moved it 1%, what would that look like?
If I could just correct, by sharing the increase, 50/50, it moved the cost share by 0.4%.
So there wasn't, there was cost savings.
There was a slight cost savings to, not savings, we shared the increase.
Right.
Okay, so...
It didn't cost us more.
So if we go back to your table, that, so 2018-2019 cost, it was 22,154, and so the split there was 82-18?
We do the math there, I believe it's 82.6% and 17.4%.
Okay.
Is the current cost share.
Can you say that again?
82.18 million, 306,000, 44,000 divided by 222 million is...
Come on, Tim, come on.
I went to Georgia Tech, I don't know, we're good with numbers.
There you go.
82.6% and 17.4% is the current cost share of our current rates.
Did you do any analysis if our, as opposed to shifting the thinking away from percentages and more towards if we just held firm at 650, 1047, and 1561? Like, what if we just kept our total cost share at 18, 306,444 and just held it steady?
Apologize, say that again, I'm sorry.
So what if we kept our 2018-2019 cost fixed?
That's cool, okay, that's kind of, we're in the middle. I mean, for this, you know, on January 22nd, what we showed you was our cost at $18,472,603, and then the question, I guess, that was posed to us was, what if you move it another 1% and that 1% gets you to $18,236,000?
So I think your question is, if we just held, if we passed all of the increase along to our employees?
Correct.
That would make it 81.4%.
Thank you. Because I'm not sure I like...
You know what the employees would be after that? That'd be more like 18.6.
Right.
And this wasn't, we, I apologize, I thought we were answering the question that was posed to us of moving it 1%.
I think these are not proposals. We're trying to answer a question and give you a sense of what you'd need to do if you wanted to share more of the cost, the cost share with less for us and more for the employee. And the other, the impact one that Mr. Baker has not shown yet, you may want to have a look at as well because it's quite significant.
The last slide, and I showed this to, the last board meeting, then this was teachers, and there's four points of information on here, is bus drivers, is four points of information. So again, the same rates for the $500 deductible plan, what would that mean annually for that increase? And the $250 deductible plan, what would that mean annually for that increase? And then also, what does a 4% raise mean for a beginning bus driver? And the top line is, what does a 4% raise mean for a driver who's earning approximately $20,000 a year? So it's showing you it's obviously eating up more of that potential raise.
Ms. Cook? So while you're talking about this, can you talk about it in terms of total compensation and how we compare to other divisions with regard to their total compensation? Because when we look at benefits, I mean, you've done a really good job of comparing an increase in pay to an increase in, a potential increase in rates. But if we are, if compared to other divisions, we are compensating our, putting more of our, our higher percentage of our compensation in healthcare than in salary, that may also inform our thinking about any adjustments we want to make or not make.
I believe we had a school board question on this item.
Correct. Just for the public and for everyone to see that.
This is a... Thank you. The question we had had from the school board question was, and it was kind of part of the slide from before with us, York, Newport News, Hampton and Gloucester, of what percentage of our budget are we, and I apologize, I don't have a slide for this. But we're, we are paying slightly higher percentage of our entire budget regarding benefits. We paid, I think, 27.12% versus like Hampton was paying 24.5, 25%, and Gloucester paying 25.81% of their entire budget. And you're getting into hundreds of millions of dollars of what their budgets are and how they divvy up personnel benefits as part of their entire budget. We were slightly higher than our, some of our neighbors in that sense.
Even Newport News?
I had to go back and look at it.
The table underneath that has Newport News at 87.53.
Yeah, so I think it must be a little bit higher.
But it's different math.
The reason I ask that question is because if we're struggling with our entry pay and our entry teachers, our new teachers typically, because of their age, aren't going to want, robust health insurance may not be as high a priority.
robust health insurance may not be as high a priority for them as our older employees. And if we're investing a higher percentage of our total compensation package in benefits, might we want to rethink that mix so that we're paying maybe higher salaries and then having a little less of, contributing a little less of the cost share so that employees who want to invest more of their compensation in healthcare can, but we're not in essence making that decision for them? That, that's kind of what I'm trying to understand better.
I think it's a great philosophy.
And I, you know, I'd like to have data to make, you know, I'd like to not just, I'd like to be able to benchmark ourselves against others to do, to have that conversation.
That chart, the chart also wasn't giving me, I guess, what I was looking for. We'll continue that with another school board question later.
That's my last slide, so I'm welcome to ask, answer any questions and, you know, trying to get you the information that you're looking for to help you make a decision.
So Dr. Heron, with this discussion, the idea of percentages versus a fixed amount that the division puts towards the cost of insurance, or you've heard some discussion, but not a very hearty discussion, and we may need more information and data to drive that.
Absolutely. I think we'll go back to the, the board and try to get you more of what you need. I think philosophically, it would be helpful to have some sense of where the whole board is in terms of wanting to change the money we pay on salaries as opposed to percentage we pay in benefits, if there's a, if there's an interest in doing that, and what information would you need to really make that decision?
Yeah, I'm, from your, if I was sitting in your perspective, I'm not exactly sure I know what information you want from individual board members. So that's a question I would have. I don't know what information you're looking for. What specifically do you need them to give you?
I, I would like to better understand compared to our peer divisions.
Right.
When we look at total compensation, what percentage of that pie is dedicated to salary versus benefits compared to others? So we could then determine whether we are comparatively over or under invested in healthcare benefits.
So is the by, the pie of their entire budget, or is it pie of their entire personnel cost?
Total compensation, right.
For personnel.
Right.
For personnel.
And within that, within that benefit package, only a small portion is even of, in our purview, so much of it is formulaically driven and mandated, whether it's VRS or whatever. But within that, health benefits and, and.
Salry.
Well, and tuition assistance are the only benefits that we really, at a local level, can contract or expand. And so compared to the other divisions, I would like to know whether we're, again, over, over or under invested in benefits, because if, it would inform my thinking about that table on whether we want to increase the cost share or, or reduce the cost share or hold steady.
So over and under invested in what?
In health benefits as compared to.
So that we pay more, more of our.
Large.
Or less of where we stand as far as how much of the health insurance that we as a division pay for our employees?
We already have that information. We, 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 we know in terms of salary, we're like, I don't know, what, seventh, eighth, whatever it is.
Right.
We've got that information. And then the other information that we now have is the, the percentage of our compensation that goes for benefits, including healthcare. My feeling is, I don't think healthcare is a, is a major attraction. I, I really think that salary is, is a, is a really key issue. And, and if there's a way to, you know, make a substantive increase in, in salary by having more of the health insurance passed on to employees, I don't, I, I don't think that, I don't know if that's going to meet great resistance, but I, but I can tell you that most teachers that I ever talked to don't talk about health benefits.
Obviously don't.
They talk about salary. So we're, we're sort of chipping, we're kind of chipping away. And, and you know, me, I've, I've said in the past, maybe we should do something bold once in a while when it comes to something like this. We're, we're, we're in actually, you know, probably much better shape than a lot of divisions in terms of recruitment. Don't have some of the issues that a lot of them do, but, but other divisions are going to catch up. I, that's still sort of my bottom line position is, and, and you're right, saving, I know, it's still a lot of money, two hundred and thirty thousand or whatever it was. It would be pointless, to me, it's pointless to do that, to get out a quarter percent or, you know, whatever additional, so that's my, that's what I'd like to see.
Thank you, Dr. Beres, Ms. Young?
I think, I think one of the things that we touched on at our last discussion was there are many of our employees that do not take any health insurance because of maybe a spouse has insurance. And so I'm, I think we should seriously take a look at this beginning salary and the steps with, with less money going for health benefits, because, and I do realize that, I mean, looking at the benefits information that, that Mr. Baker was so kind as to give us, there's many things we have no control over, but that we do have some control over. And I can remember as a first-year teacher, I didn't even know I was going to get health benefits, and I don't know how many, I mean, maybe they're more astute, maybe I just wasn't aware, but I, I mean, I'd rather have more control over the money coming in and making those decisions myself than us, you know, making it for them. And so I think that's something I would like to see what would happen if we offered more salary and, and maybe the cost share in health benefits either goes up or providing, or maybe reducing the health benefits. I mean, I, that's what I'm thinking, because I'd much rather have the money in my pocket. And then if I want to invest more of my money in healthcare, then I think that would be a personal decision. I don't know if I explained that very well, but.
Mr. Kelly?
Well, if we look at, it's not as simple as to say that we're seventh in, seventh in salary, because that's starting salary.
Right.
And we hire twenty-something out of 120 are brand-new teachers.
Or first-year teachers.
So a lot of our teachers come in with five years of experience.
Right.
And those teachers are coming in families, and they are coming in looking for health insurance. And I think if we sell them short that they're not considering that as part of their total compensation, I don't think that we're necessarily giving them the credit that they have, that they, that they're, that they're looking at that number as, okay, what is all of that? So, so since we, since we aren't really in the competitive market for the first-year teachers, I'm more concerned at where we are for, for those mid-year teachers that, that come to us, that, that maybe they're, they've, they've been to the bigger cities and they're looking for where they can raise their kids, and they want to come here. And so they're looking, considering all of those things. So I'm, I'm not, it's not as simple as saying that, okay, out of the box, we're, we should, you know, do whatever, you know, give them more leniency and, because medical costs in this country continue to grow with, and it's a, and having appropriate health insurance, and adequate health insurance, I think is an important issue for our teachers and for any of our employees. So I'm, I'm, I don't know, I just have some concerns about playing with that, and I don't want to, I don't want to, to, if, if we contribute a little bit more for our employees' health insurance than other divisions, I'm okay with that. Do any of these numbers consider the $50 surcharge that we do for spouses of?
We do. That's in there. I mean, that's built into the rate.
So is that built in into the, in, into the WJC, into the employee cost share?
Yeah, that, no, that's into the employer, I mean, I'm sorry, into the employee, that's their rate. I mean, it's, that's, that's what that would cost. Correct, it is built in. The, the, a couple of years ago, when we brought forward, we charged an extra $50 per.
Right.
That's built in for the spouse. That's when the, I showed that, that slide.
Right. So I just have a, I just have, I think we need to think long and hard before we come off and start, start saying that we're overpaying our employees' health insurance and that we're, that we should reduce that. So that's just where I am.
And I, and I agree with what, what Mr. Kelly is saying, because I do think if you're in that five, over five years on up, you that, because you're now more of an adult and, and you do consider that. But I do have a question, do we know what percentage of our teachers do not, do not use our health benefit program?
It's about a quarter, I think thirteen hundred of our teachers.
Not, not just teachers, employees.
Thirteen hundred of our employees take the health insurance.
So thirteen out of seventeen hundred?
Yeah, it's about a three-quarters.
Okay.
I think Ms. Ewen may have a little bit more information on the percentages Ms. Cook you were asking for. Ms. Ewen, you want to come up and just share that with us, just having broken down some of the numbers we have here into percentages?
So for us, our total personnel budget as compared to, our total budget is fifty-nine point four-nine percent. The benefit budget compared to total budget is twenty-seven point twelve percent. For York, their personnel budget is sixty point zero-nine percent. Their benefit budget is twenty-four point four percent. Newport News, their personnel budget is sixty-two point nine-seven percent. Their benefit budget is twenty-four point five-six percent. For Hampton, their personnel budget is fifty-six point four-one percent. And their benefit budget is twenty-four point two-five percent. For Gloucester, their personnel budget is sixty point four-seven percent. And their benefit budget is twenty-five point eight-one percent.
So we're higher than all of our peers.
We pay a higher percentage of our overall compensation goes to benefits as opposed to salary.
That's what you were asking for.
As a total of the budget.
Correct.
But not as a, within, if you took total compensation out as its own budget and then did benefits versus salary within that, that would also be helpful to understand. Because when you're comparing total budgets, you're comparing transportation and, and other things are embedded in that. But when you take total compensation out as its, as its own entity and then break that out as a percentage and compare it, then you're really comparing apples to apples. Does that make sense?
I don't.
I think there's another piece of information too. I don't have it for us. I have it here in front of me from Newport News and Gloucester. It's, I'm looking at Newport News, and I'm looking under health insurance, and from FY 2016, it has virtually unchanged, it's virtually has, has not changed more than 1.3%. So in other words, they have a flat line over three or four years for their health insurance, but their salaries are going up. And if I look at Gloucester, and I, back in 2016, it's 5.1 million, then it's 5.7, 6.2. Their increase is, is greater over, over that four-year period. But, but the other part of that is Gloucester really had a big boost in their salaries to compensate for that. So it's, I know it's a tricky, it is, you know, I think people need to realize that it's a lot more complex than simply, we'll add this or, or, you know, increase that. But how do, how would we compare with that if you, I know you don't, you probably don't have it right at the tip of your tongue, but if, if we, okay, our total health was, you know, X number of dollars in 2016, what was in 17, 18, 19? Just to, just to see, just to compare.
I think our, I mean, our, our rate has gone up, I think, averaged about five percent from, from what the cost, total, the overall cost was.
We're probably higher. We're probably, we're probably higher than, than all of these in terms of.
I'm not sure what you're looking at.
That health, yeah. I'm looking at the, the, these charts that came with this, the response to the question, how the percentage of our total budget dedicated to total compensation, and that would, these were attached.
Okay.
And this one was for Gloucester, and the other one was for, where is it now? York, I mean, Newport News. So I, we don't, I don't have York, I don't have York.
We weren't able to find all of the information on all of the surrounding divisions. I think Ms. Ewen pulled those from the public websites for, for both of those, the two that she could get, just as a FYI.
It'd be interesting to see, because I think what I'm assuming what's going to confirm that, yeah, we really, we're, we very consciously increase our, our health benefits or try to keep the cost, or sort more the cost ourselves. And again, I still, and maybe, maybe part of what we start to talk about is, is, you know, there's nothing wrong with choice, is, you know, you can either have a salary increase or we're going to boost your, or you'll pay less for your health insurance. I mean.
And that's part of what we talked about last time was for some folks who want to make that choice, if they're on the $250 deductible plan, if they want to choose the $500 deductible plan and have more in their take-home pay that month. And that's a, that's a, you know, a personal choice.
It's.
So I'm still struggling that they know what information to get us. So if they take, if they take, and maybe I'm just, I don't know, but if they, if they take the total personnel budget divided by number of personnel, get a pie for how much per person?
Not per capita, no.
Okay, so I'm, I'm out.
I mean, per capita would be interesting, but that doesn't necessarily help us, I mean, it would be interesting. But when you take percentage of the total budget, you may not be comparing apples to apples, because everybody's transportation budget is different.
Got you.
So take the entire total compensation budget and then divide that out by percentage, which percentage is salary, which percentage is compensation, and then compare all those divisions, our peer divisions or neighboring divisions, so we could see where we're, as a percentage of the total compensation budget.
Okay.
Where we're putting our money in salary or, or benefits, and compare that to.
And then I guess for me, kind of going back to what Ms. Cook said earlier, information would be helpful to have. If we, if we considered a fixed amount instead of the percentage, if we say $650 is what we, as a division, let's just random number, will go towards an individual, if we, over time, that would insulate us from, from the increase, which is very volatile every year. Is it eight percent, is it five percent, is it 1.5? So if we decide as a division that the, this is the amount of money that we're going to pay for insurance, for individual, for family, plus one, whatever that amount, then, so how does that impact employees at the lower, lower pay scale? That's what I would like to know. But I think, I think it is bold, I think what we're suggesting as a board is getting away from a percentage and considering fix, let's, let's make a decision as a board to say, X amount of dollars will go towards health insurance. And then when we take an eight percent hit next year, that's passed on to the employee. If we take a five percent, 1.5, like, what does that do?
Well, I don't think that it's necessarily by automatically passed on to the employee, but we then can decide that fixed amount, whether we increase it by one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, or eight percent. We, we then, we're, we're budgeting that amount as a total whole of the budget. So if you go back to that table, then we're not, by stepping away from talking in terms of percentages, we have a little bit more ability, more of an ability to talk about what cost share we want to, to invest in that piece. And, and just while we're talking about it, I just want to say, I absolutely think that if I had to prioritize between a four percent raise, and, and I know we're not apples and apples, these are apples and oranges, but I, I place a higher priority on a four percent raise if that means we have to. raise if that means we have to step back a little bit from our cost share. And my, my logic for that is because the raise affects a hundred percent of our employees and the cost share affects three quarters of them.
And the retirement?
Right, and it increases retirement, social security, as Mrs. Young has always said. I, I would like that information though of the total pie, because I would, I, I think we're a little bit heavily invested in benefits. And, and I don't think that is equitable because it, because that isn't as important to everybody. It's important to a certain, to some people, but it's not important to them the entire lifespan either. And so I, I would prefer to, to, to invest in salary when compared to benefits. But again, I would like that data to confirm that we are a little bit heavily invested there.
Dr. Beers?
Um, I just did rough, rough math. For Gloucester and Newport News, and it's right around four percent of their total budget is benefits. So if you add all their, because all, everything up, up, this whole top part is basically salaries. And, you know, part-time I had, and they have a figure over here, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-one million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, that's Newport News. And then their total benefits are seventy-four thousand. Do the math and it's like right around four percent. Same thing with Gloucester, it's right around four percent. So it'd be interesting to see where we are.
Ms. Young?
I guess all, all I can say is because having been a teacher, when you get close to retirement, yes, and, and there's a lot of things that can impact getting there. You could get sick, you can go somewhere else to teach, et cetera, et cetera. But that overall amount of money that, that a teacher makes in salary over time is what impacts their retirement especially. And I, and I think that's a critical thing that we need to continue to think about because our teachers are not retiring as millionaires. And, and retirement pay is, is wonderful, but I would really like teachers to, to feel like that they're secure in the amount of money that they're going to receive, that it's not going to, because health benefits are really necessary when you get older. But having a decent retirement is also, so that's just where I'm coming from, having been there, so.
Additional thoughts?
I just would like to say, I kind of, I agree with Ms. Young, the earlier statement that you were saying about giving choice to our employees. Giving them their salary and then letting them decide what to do with it is, is just like the direction I would like to go. So it's a little bit different than saying you have the option, here's this, you know, gold-plated, and, and, uh, gold-plated benefits package, but you can opt to, to do a really high deductible. But rather even out the benefits package and.
Increase salary.
Increase the salary. And that's just where, if you're looking for like direction from the board, that's my feeling.
I agree.
Mine too. Is that consensus?
No.
What about you?
Yes, I agree.
Okay.
I agree. Almost consensus.
Almost consensus.
So, just for clarity, we're, I've heard a lot about the raise in compensation and we've, we've brought two different figures, four percent is kind of on the table right now. Do you have any comments on the percentage of raise in compensation?
I think. I'll toss it to the board.
I would be comfortable with staying flat or, you know, or something slightly higher. The, the chart where we're slightly less. Not, I'm not sure I want to cut, cut people, keep our contribution, but I don't want to increase it.
You don't want to increase the school system's contribution.
Correct.
To, so you conversely would want it.
To benefits.
Correct.
You're asking about compensation, salary.
The salary?
Alloys.
I would like to keep it at four percent.
Yeah, four percent.
And that was, we've talked about four, we've talked about five. Is, I'm, I'm hearing everyone is thinking that that's a, a fair way to move forward. If we can, it will mean asking for more money because when you look at the extra money we'll be asking for from the localities, that nine hundred thousand represents a one percent.
So Ms. Young, you're at.
I, I do understand that, but I think if we take a look at the health benefits package, I would, you know, we're talking about comparing ourselves to the localities, we're talking about, we've, we've talked about, I completely forgot where I was going with this, but just give me a second. I would go for five percent. We talked about being bold. I, I would like us to shoot for the five percent. And, and I will concede to Dr. Heron because I value her, her knowledge and input a lot, but I would really like to see us do five percent.
So where are folks with four percent? Or most of us are at four, you'll concede to four, but.
I'm at five.
Okay.
Five.
Five, two, so.
I'm at, I'm at four because I want to support the additional APs and the security guards. And so when I look at the additional security guards and the APs, that's going to cost, that's another three hundred and some thousand on top of our budget, our gap. So I, for me, the four percent sounds reasonable, so.
Five percent adds a million dollars to our ask right now.
And there's already a million dollar gap?
There's a million dollar gap.
That includes APs at every.
Yeah, so basically looking at what we've, all of our real needs are included. Three percent raise, we're flat. Four percent, we ask for about a million dollars. Five percent, we ask for two million dollars.
I think the majority of the board is okay with four percent. Some of us would like five, but most of us are at four. And then with regard to health insurance, looking at fixed amounts versus percentages.
The four to five, I, I'm more comfortable with four if, if there's attached kind of a plan with it that, that looks, I'm mindful that the, that the county creates a budget on a biennium and that there, you know, that we already are going in with, with a gap. But if, I think we should be aggressive and bold with a plan to, over the next several years, get to the top of, of, of our peers with salary. So four would be okay with me if it accompanied a plan that included a multi-year effort to increase salary over time with the cost associated with that.
And I think that definitely is our intention. We, for the first time, gave a three percent raise, which was a significant raise in a long time last year, and to go in with four is very significant for our staff this year. Plus, we don't know what the, the governor's budget of five percent may not stand. We don't know where that's going to land. And if it comes in at less than five, then we would be asking for even more again. So we're putting ourselves way out there at, at five. So I'm, I'm hearing the majority comfortable with four percent as a, as a very reasonable ask for our employees to try to move us up that ladder towards better salaries over time.
Or four and a half.
I was just thinking that too. What about four and a half? I think that would be kind of a compromise and, but I wouldn't want to get us closer to where we need to be.
I could live with four and a half.
One point five million, yeah.
Right. Well, I think what I'm probably going to do is I'll be proposing my budget obviously at the next meeting. And then, you know, certainly the, the board is in, is in a position to, to take that and increase the percentage of ask if they see fit at that point in time. Or the salary increase, which basically represents the difference right now of dollars.
If you have detailed questions that you feel are still unanswered, if you would please put those in writing so we can fully understand what you need us to have for you before the next meeting. And I think I'm, I'm hearing to continue to look at the, at the cost share. If I could take us to the last slide again, just before we leave the conversation.
The one before that. It's not, that last one's not doing a lot for me.
It's been a long, long afternoon.
Just, just an awareness of, of the impact of even a slight change in cost share for our lowest paid employees. And setting a figure that we don't move from, this is, these are the people who are going to be impacted the most, just to.
And the other concern I have too with, with the health insurance is that when you drive people to higher deductible plans, you're, you're, you're driving them towards additional risk that if they do have medical bills, that will wipe out any salary increase that they get from that quickly if they, by not having better health insurance. So I just, I worry about us passing on that risk and passing on that cost to our employees without an understanding of the, the chance that they actually do have medical expenses that would blow up any salary increase that they would have, so.
I think it's important to understand that Virginia expanded Medicaid and Medicaid is available as a secondary insurance to people that are income eligible even if they have insurance through their employer. So I think your concern is really valid, but, but that's an option available to employees of, of the division who, who qualify.
Who would qualify?
Anyone who makes a hundred and thirty-eight percent of poverty or below.
So what's that number?
For a family of four, I think it's forty-two, forty-five thousand, somewhere in there. I haven't looked at.
Which wouldn't cover a whole lot of our employees.
The other side of that is if they do get a significant raise, they can afford the.
Thousands of dollars of medical costs.
Of, of a slower deductible.
Uh, okay.
But that's somewhat of a game changer, Mr. Kelly. It's the Medicaid expansion for, for lower employees, lower, lower paid employees in large institutions, whether it be the division, school division or Clonaway, Spur or William &amp; Mary.
With that, thank you, Mr. Baker.
My pleasure.
We'll move on to policies. Item eight point one, I think is Ms. DePaula. Retire policy IE, organization of instruction.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, that was kind of a tough act to follow, but I'm here tonight to bring forward policy IE, organization of instruction, and ask for your consideration to retire this policy. There is no corresponding VSBA policy. None of our surrounding school divisions have a policy that's at all similar. This policy was adopted in nineteen ninety-three and our council has advised us to retire it.
Agree.
There agreement? Are there questions for Ms. DePaula? Item eight point two, revise policy J E C A, admission of homeless students. Ms. Bujwa?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, I bring before you policy J E C A, which is regarding the admission of homeless students. It supports the McKinney-Vento Act. The main change that you will see is that we've taken No Child Left Behind out since that's not what we operate under anymore and have changed it to Every Student Succeeds Act of two thousand fifteen. We also attach for your review the regulations that support this policy.
Thank you, Ms. Bujwa. I know Ms. Hummel has a question and then I will go to Ms. Young. Yes, could you tell the listening public how many homeless children we serve in WJCC?
Four hundred and something.
It's over four hundred.
Yeah.
Cumulative over the year. So, so a student may become eligible at any point during the year depending on life situations.
And in a nutshell, I know that's a, it's a, a big document. What are we obligated as a school system to do for homeless children in our school system?
The most important thing that we're obligated to do is provide them access to a continuing education program. And so we have a, a process that our social workers help lead. When a student is identified as homeless, where they will make a best interest determination. Students have the right to stay in most cases in their school of origin, which means the school where they were attending at the time they became homeless. And so that can involve making transportation arrangements within our school division, that a student is now not living in the school zone where they started the school year, but we still make sure they get there. It could be that we are making transportation arrangements for students that are living outside our division in Hampton or Newport News or York County, because it's about creating that sense of stability for a stu, a child during a time of unrest.
And the other thing that surprised me as a school board member is we have a high number of homeless children in our school system compared to our surrounding areas. And did, whether you had any of that data to share off the top of your head, I hear that we're, we have as many as Newport News.
It's similar. The number's similar. I can get those numbers for you, so.
I just think that.
We do, we do have a higher percentage than what would be anticipated.
So for me, as a school board member, I was really, this was eye-opening to me. Before I was a school board member, I had no idea that, I had no idea, first of all, that we had that many homeless children that we were, or students that we were serving and then, and to which the school division goes to serve them. And then I, I didn't know how much money that costs us.
I have an exact number for that. We do get, as part of Project Hope, we do get a grant every year that helps cover some of that. The majority of that goes towards transportation and providing that service.
And that grant's been around a long, long time because we have seen over the years a steady increase in the number of homeless.
And my hat goes off to all the people in the school division that are dealing with this and on a day-to-day basis, who I would consider like our most vulnerable population. So, thank you guys.
Ms. Young?
I'm going to sound like the Grinch, because in previous board meetings I have asked about when students are registered for school, what kind of documents they have to provide. And then I, when I was reading this, I was, part of the homeless population is migratory children. And they don't, according to the law, they don't have to provide documentation at all. Is that correct?
You cannot deny them enrollment in school because of missing documentation.
And, and who are these migratory children? And here it states, students who are migrant, children of migratory agriculture workers or migratory fisher, or who join a parent or spouse who is a migratory agriculture worker or a migratory fisher. I mean, and since you're not, they don't have to have documentation, I mean, I'm concerned, first of all, I guess I should ask about how many kids this really applies to.
We don't see that very often, but we do see students that are missing their, some of their documentation. That's, that applies to any student that qualifies under homelessness. So if a student is, is in an unstable situation, they've lost their housing, they're doubled up, they're living in a car, they may not have immediate access to a copy of their birth certificate.
No, and I, I do understand that.
So, so, so that procedure applies to any student that's been identified as homeless?
Okay, I guess I will send in a, a school board question because, I mean, the Migratory Education Act, which I was reading today, I think that opens school divisions to a lot of additional costs that taxpayers are not aware that they're paying. And I was, I'm, I'm just surprised. So basically that was my question. I, I do think I sound like Grinch, but I.
And I can look at our state reporting to see what numbers. Most, most of our stu, majority of our students are, are doubled up or living in hotels. They're, they're, they're because of lack of housing.
Right, I understand that. I'm, they're not living in their car and van, so thank you.
No questions for Ms. Bujwa? The next item, eight point three, revise policy EBCD, school closings. I think there's several from Mr. Snipes.
Good evening again. Tonight, we're ringing for, for you to revise policy EBCD, school closings. This was adopted in two thousand nine. On the policy committee, reviewed these revisions. And we want to align our policy with the school, with the VSBA policy. The attorney has reviewed and supports that recommendation.
Questions?
I noticed that last sentence, the guidelines may be reviewed by the school board? Where are the guidelines? Are, are. Are, are this, are these the guidelines right here?
The guideline?
Yeah, I'm looking at, you know, we've, we've got a red line.
Regarding to adverse weather.
Yeah, employees will follow guidelines related to the, to work schedules. And then it says the guidelines may be reviewed by the school board? Have we ever reviewed those? What are they?
It's just a question. We'd have to get you the answer if you've ever reviewed them.
But they must be somewhere. Somebody's written them out, they're written, we have guidelines?
Well, so, I think it's, I think it says, well, follow guidelines related to work schedules, so they can come, you know, if we have closed the schools, but the, but the parent, the teachers come, or, or professional, I don't know, professional development days, but it says, we may ask about why they do that, but we don't have to, we don't have to approve those.
Second.
I don't even know why that sentence is in there.
Yeah, I mean, the why put that, why is that sentence even in there then?
Want to strike it?
Although we review guidelines for just about everything else, so I'm just curious.
I mean, do you wanna, do you want us to strike it?
I'd be interested what the lawyers say about that, and then strike it as necessary.
So, line 14. Second sentence in line 14.
If there's any way we could just, Serza, if there's any way we could have the lawyers maybe see, like, is there any, like, reason why we have to have? I know it's following VSBA, right? That's why it's there. So, but if we struck it, would it be any?
We'll certainly get you that information and send it out prior to the next meeting.
Any additional questions about that, Ms. Young?
What are the guidelines related to work schedules? I mean, I mean, I know, I'm right back to where he was, but, I mean, there are, I, I mean, to me, that just, so does that mean that, that employees report at their, their scheduled work, the time they're supposed to appear at work, and they can leave at the end of the duty day, or? I mean, I'm, I'm trying to understand, because you have, a lot of our employees who are in that middle bracket, which we talked about earlier, have kids, and.
So we may want to strike that line and share the guidelines with the board.
Yes, please, thank you. I would appreciate that.
If any.
If any, thank you.
Yeah, if any, and then, I mean, 'cause I, I'm wondering, are they even somewhat arbitrary? But a guideline usually isn't, but I would kind of like to.
I think it depends on, on the weather event that happens, whether it's a hurricane, or snow, or whatever. Sometimes we'll give employees guidelines as to what to do in response to that. So for example, Mr. Snipes may have some custodial staff coming in before other staff members, and there's certain guidelines that his staff would follow that are different from others. So, they would probably be different for different types of staff members, and dependent upon the actual weather event. Or procedural, more administrative, than board-related type of policy.
Well, I'm looking at the legal reference, and I'm seeing 19, Code of Virginia, 1950.
As amended, as amended.
It's still, whatever that code.
It's obviously been around for a long time. Let's, let's find a new little bit of information, we'll bring it, we may even want to bring this back through policy committee. I'll give you a chance to look at it again, and in case there's anything you want to consider. Hopefully, the policy committee will strike as appropriate before the next meeting.
Well, the other, the other thing, this has been, you know, this is a little more serious, is, is HR involved in the creation of either the guidelines or the regulations as it relates to employees?
I would presume they would be, but we will follow up and find out.
Sorry, Tim.
I think we need to take this one back and have a closer look at it, but appreciate your questions.
Okay, so with that, we will move on to 8.4, revised policy E E B A, authorized use of vehicles.
This policy was revised in 2007. We are making some minor edits, and we need to make some additional edits, but the minor edits that are being done are, we're changing the superintendent or designee on lines 26 and 31. We're adding supervisor of maintenance to lines 27 and 28. We are adding a school employee, the term, a school employee to line 41, and we are adding the term is used to line 47. There is no corresponding VSBA policy. The policy committee reviewed it, and I believe there is one additional revision that we probably need to look at tonight, which is on line 36. We want to change the assistant superintendent of operations to also, to change that to superintendent or designee.
Okay. Are there any additional questions, comments?
So we don't have that version in front of us?
No, you do not.
But so, so where you have superintendent designated before, that I see right here, you're gonna change it to supervisor or superintendent or supervisor of?
On lines 26, 31, and 36, you want to change the term assistant superintendent of operations to superintendent or designee on line 36. And on line 26, you want to say by the superintendent or designee. And on line 31, you want to say by the superintendent or designee.
So who, who would the designee be?
Senior director of operations.
So wouldn't you put that there?
We could. But if he wasn't available, it may, I may have to designate.
I think designee should stay.
Yeah, I agree.
At the director level.
It gives a little more leeway.
That's the only change.
So basically, you, we, we, the policy committee did not catch the fact that you changed it in two, in two paragraphs and not the third paragraph. Basically, it's just correcting that one, that one thing. Is everyone okay with that?
Fine. I mean, Ms. Young?
I, I guess I, do, do we have additional cars that employees can use?
Yes, we have a, what we call a white fleet, which are cars that they can use.
How many cars are in the white fleet?
They're called a white fleet because the cars are white. Usually, all the cars are white.
Well, that's fine, but I mean, how many cars are there involved?
We, I can get that, I can get that information to you, but it's over 20, I can tell you.
Over how many?
20.
I learned so many interesting things tonight.
They're generally used by maintenance, the director of transportation. They're all vehicles that are used to, so we can move throughout the division throughout the day, and then they're returned at the end of the day.
Thank you.
The only problem I have with designee is how do you determine who that designee is?
Sure. So we probably better go with senior director of that. That leaves it just one level down, or you're more comfortable with that?
Well, but the superintendent is the one that determines, correct?
Right.
So, if he's on long-term disability for some reason, or short-term, or whatever, you're gonna designate.
Something like that.
If Mr. Snipes won the lottery.
Health insurance, don't worry about it.
If he won the lottery and all of a sudden he took a really long vacation, you would be the one, as superintendent, to designate who. We're okay with designee, aren't we?
I, I prefer it.
And sometimes a designee could be the director of transportation if it's not me, so they can be.
And I mean, and the superintendent presumably to, to, would put that in writing, to.
Presumably?
Presumably.
I just, I just think that that, it seems that that would go, that would, decision would go too high in the organization for me.
But the lawyer thinks it's okay.
Doesn't necessarily mean that it's okay. They're only give advice. So, I, I don't know.
I want to take in this instance.
So, I don't know, I just, I just think someone might say, I'm the designee.
Could be director or above, because that, anyone beneath us, that is unlikely to give a director of our approval to take a vehicle home. So that would certainly, in the, behind, in the next level of regs, we could certainly write something to, to clarify that.
You'll, so you'll take care of it in the regs?
We, we can write something in behind that actually captures the designee in this circumstance would be director or above.
And is everyone okay with that?
I'm fine.
Mr. Kelly? Okay, Mr. Snipes, I think the next one is also you. Revised policy E F C, energy management conservation policy?
Correct, the, if, this policy was adopted in 2008, and you are correct, we are reviewing and revising this policy. We would like to change line seven, and change it from ensuring with an I to ensuring with an E. We would also like to remove the sentence, the end of the sentence in line 13 and 14 from the word cost. That would be the end of the sentence in line 13. We replace any term of campus with building, and that would, those lines are 16, 18, and 31. And we would remove the term, the principals on line 31, when it is discussing making it part of the principal's annual evaluation. It is now only a part of the custodial supervisor or head custodians' evaluation. And the policy committee did review these, the attorney has reviewed it, and there's no current VSBA policy.
Do you want to say building or buildings? Like Lafayette, or a lane have multiple buildings? I mean, I don't, I mean, I just, that's, I mean, campus kind of, kind of covers.
More than just the building.
So I, I, I don't, I don't know what the driver behind changing it from campus to building was, but.
Attorney's recommendation.
Advice. Right. So I, it just seems that, I don't care. It's, I'm quibbling, the attorney's quibbling, everybody's quibbling. It just seems it should be, it should be.
Broader.
Each building.
Inclusive.
Building?
Yeah.
For Lafayette, you have.
Multiple buildings.
Multiple buildings.
Each building.
But what was the reason for changing it from, I mean, the lawyers said building is better than campus, but why?
I think campus, a, large, a multiple, multiple build. Like, a principal and everything that. I don't know. I'm just speaking.
I'm not buying that.
Off the top of my head.
Okay.
I don't care.
I don't know. I don't really care. I'm kind of with, with Kelly on this one. Doesn't matter to me, but if you want to put building, or building slash S.
Or principal's S.
I mean, I guess the question is whether we're, we're focusing energy management on the building themselves or on campus and all that that entails, right? Because the campuses are then building.
Yes, it's grounds.
Right, and so, I think that, what's the intent of the board?
The campus.
So am I hearing?
Turning the lights off, and the fields. Water the fields. Overwater the fields.
So do we want to change that by? Back to campus?
Back to campus.
Or ask about it, at least.
Ask about it. I do see his point on the campus part, with the water conservation and lights and field lights. Good catch, Mr. Kelly.
Every once in a while.
Okay, moving on to item 8.6, review policy E F M, environmentally sustainable practices.
Again, this policy was adopted in 2009. We are reviewing it. It's, is a, there is no corresponding VSBA policy. The policy committee has reviewed and recommended no revisions, and the attorney has reviewed and supports that recommendation.
Questions about that?
I could quibble some more, but I'm.
No, there's nothing to quibble about there.
Well, he says, it says it's cost neutral. I would say it's at least cost neutral. But I'm good, I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to action items. 9.1, personnel actions. We need a motion?
I move, adopt personnel actions as presented.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Hummel? Aye. Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 9.2, award a contract for request for proposal 19-13672, design services for entry alterations for WJCC public schools.
Item Chair, I move we award a contract for request proposal number 19-13672, design services for entry alterations for WJCC public schools, to RRM in the amount of $91,169.18.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion?
20 cents, but 18 cents.
Very none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Okay, item 9.3, appointment to the Special Education Advisory Committee.
I move that we approve the appointment of Tanya Williams to the Special Education Advisory Committee for a term ending October 31, 2020.
Second? Any discussion? Very none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to board matters, board member comments. Starting with Ms. Taylor.
Sure, just another quick thank you to Ms. Serza for always keeping us in line and sending us our calendar invites, and making sure we're, where we need to be. We do need wrangling at times. And also, thank you to the James River students, and the Matthew Whaley students, and the James Blair students, who made our lovely posters that are here this evening. We very much appreciate it. That's all I have for this evening.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I want to say I look forward to Dr. Heron's kindness updates in upcoming meetings, and I really appreciate that community effort. And I wanted to thank staff for their work on the calendar and on the budget today, and all the preparation that went into today's meeting. And likewise, would like to thank Ms. Serza for all her hard work, and also the school board. You all do amazing work, and it's hard, and difficult, and laborious sometimes, but, but worth it, so I want to appreciate you. And also, Ms. spoke earlier about the federal poverty level. I looked it up while we were talking, and it, I rounded up a little too much, so a family of four is $35,000 a year, so I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
Okay, first of all, the last time I announced that at Jamestown High School, coming this, this coming Sunday, February the 11th, there is going to be an event called The Happening, which is in support of the students that are traveling to compete in the One Act Play competition. Dinner is going to start at 5:30. It's a spaghetti dinner. It costs $20, which includes the show. $10, if you want to come at 7, is how much it costs to enter the, the One Act Plays that they're going to present. And one of the things I thought was really cool is that if you have a student, or you know a student who's participating, you can designate, that money goes directly to their fund, to help them prepare for their travels. My friend is doing one student, I'm doing another. So that, I think, we would need, want to support those students. I do want to thank Mr. Baker for answering all of our, our incessant questions tonight, and appreciate him, and Ms. Bujwa, and those. And Ms. Ewing, I was getting there. Ms. Ewing for answering our questions. We sometimes just need more information, and appreciate you being accommodating. And especially want to thank Ms. Serza. I think I'm on the phone with her a lot, and she's always sweetness, and, and cheerful, and no matter how un-informed my question may be, so I appreciate her, and am happy to celebrate this month with her.
Got to get to know her a little better.
But, and thank you for all of the cabinet that's always here and supporting us, and sometimes smiling, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Young.
And always appreciate Dr. Heron.
Dr. Beers?
Yeah, I, I really, the only thing I'd like to say is I really, I'd like to thank the superintendent and all our staff for providing very detailed, and I know it takes time to do that, detailed answers to board questions concerning the proposed 2019-20 budget. The budget process is, is a difficult one. It's complex, it's complicated, it, it involves virtually all, all aspects, all aspects of the community, and I look forward to continuing to get that helpful information as we move towards adopting a budget.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Mr. Kelly?
Several of us a week or so ago, it seems like it's longer now, went to the Richmond for the VSBA legislative session, and learned a lot about some of the. of the crazy things that were being proposed and some of the more and more useful things that were being proposed and uh um thought that was really, really a very useful session. And then uh the next sun Saturday, Mrs. Young and I attended the N S B A Equity Conference in Washington, um and also some very thought-provoking stuff at the uh at the Equity Conference, and uh it was a pleasure to be there with Mrs. Young and uh and take part in that.
Kelly and- Thank you, Ms. Young and Ms. Kelly and Mr. Kelly for doing that, for going there on behalf of the school board and sending um your your feedback to us. It was really helpful uh and saved all of us a trip up ninety-five, so we really appreciate that.
And you should be glad.
Okay.
Because I'll let me because that hotel was a really interesting place to get to.
Anyway, and I want to echo my fellow school board members, thanks for our um occasional grilling of uh your senior staff, Dr. Heron, but it's all for good purpose, so we're trying to get the information that we need, make us feel comfortable with the decisions we need to make. So thanks for everyone's patience with us as we as we ask these difficult questions.
Thank you. I too just wanted to echo thanks to um Ms. Serza for all that you do and for staff, and you know, this is an important time, looking at the budget and trying to make the right decisions, and so we do have lots of questions, and thank you for entertaining all those and for Dr. Heron and and leading us. Dr. Heron and I had an opportunity to attend the P T A Council Reflect Award Reflections Award Ceremony, um which was held at Jamestown High School last week, and so it's always nice to see how talented our students are, K twelve across the division. I also had an opportunity to attend um an A R C film screening and community discussion. Some of our staff were there as well, Ms. Bujhwal was there. It was held at the Kimball Theater in conjunction with Wilma Mary Paley Clinic, um so it's an opportunity to to learn about the lives of uh young adults with intellectual disabilities and how they navigate um high school and then post-secondary options after that, and that's a screening that the ARC plans to do annually. I think this is the second year that they've done this or third year. I did want uh the Hornsby Middle School family to know that the school board and the division is certainly thinking about them in this very sad time. They've lost a very beloved coach and teacher. I know he certainly made an impact on thousands and thousands of students, two of which were my own, and so um our hearts go out to um to the coach's family as well as um Hornsby Middle School. And I wanted to let the broader public know to stay engaged in the budget process, and so Dr. Heron will present her budget in short order, and then it will go on to our funding partners, and so folks will need to continue to stay involved in that process. Um, it doesn't end with us, but the city and the county will make decisions um that impact our budget. And then just wanted to give the listening public um an opportunity to to go to the division website, too. There's lots of information on there um all the time, but I was just on there this week and learned that James River is hosting um an open house for their I B program um on February twenty-eighth, so would always encourage families and students to go to our division website to get information. And so with that, I think we have um upcoming events. Um, school liaison committee is meeting February seventh at seven-thirty in the morning, that's this Thursday here in the annex. The policy committee meets February thirteenth at eight A M here in the annex. Twenty-first Century Career Ready Advisory Committee is meeting February thirteenth at three-thirty, um room one oh eight in central office. And the special education advisory committee is meeting on Valentine's Day. Um, the James River Rec- uh James City County Recreation Center, that's at six-thirty in the evening. An upcoming meetings, uh the next board closed session will be on February nineteenth, six P M at Stryker. Following that, um is the regular meeting at six-thirty, also in Stryker. And then um closed session on uh March fifth here in the annex at six P M, followed by a public hearing on the budget. So that's March fifth, six-thirty here in the annex, um followed by work session um in room three hundred, and then we will be hosting our annual joint meeting with our funding partners, the city and the county board of supervisors on March fifteenth at nine A M here in the annex. Um, and then looking at the agenda for the regular meeting, um next upcoming items, we'll have an equity presentation, Dr. Heron?
I don't believe there's one planned for this month because of the presentation of the budget.
Okay, all righty. Uh, so with that, this meeting is adjourned.